Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come be in order, full call.
Okay, Mayor Wester.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
And Stankin.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, anybody for public forum? Okay, consent agenda, any additions or corrections?
No.
Motion to approve, so do it. Second?
Second.
Full call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Why he's only sick?
Yeah, he sounds terrible.
Do you motion to approve building permit for Jim and Kathy Keith?
Yes. Everything's in order here.
Any motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Full call.
Okay, Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Woltman. Moller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay, we have amended building permit for Brian Woodkey.
Yeah, just we issued a building permit for Brian's new house last July. And basically, he flip-flopped the house so that Raj enters now from the south, or maybe considered the west side. But everything is still in order, and Eric has reviewed it and would recommend approval of these, this amendment.
Second?
Second.
Full call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Open the public hearing on the proposed maximum property tax dollars. Is there any public input?
No. Again, just a reminder on this, that we gotta have this public hearing to establish maximum property tax dollars. So we had set this really a while back, that the property tax rate is proposed to go down from 7.95 to 7.29, and that ends up being a 2% increase in general fund dollars.
No more input from the public. We close the public hearing. Resolution 2209. So do it. Second?
Second.
Full call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay, we have the proposal for the engineering firm on the community center.
Yeah, so just first of all, the sheet that was on your, on your desk here tonight is the professional services agreement. This is with Lakeview Lumber. So that is that, the structural engineering firm that we'd be using. But the relationship that we would have is actually with, with Lakeview Lumber, and they would hire the structural engineering firm. And again, you see the scope of, of the services they provide. Fee for, for this, for the structural design and drafting is $7,000. And also looking at two site visits that I think would, would be in addition to that also. And then on page six, in, in the council packet, begins the, the proposal from West Plains Engineering. So this would be the engineering firm to do the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing work. And again, scope of services on that, it begins on page eight. So this is having, we'd work with, with Lakeview Lumber, get the building design, get the structural components all in place, and work with, with West Plains then after that. And then they would do the, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing to, to fit into that structural design then. So they would take care of all that as far as the planning goes then. And you look at page 10, is the cost breakout schematic design and design development, this first phase is $19,000. That's the, that's the phase that we would need to do to work through the design. And then you see the additional costs if it's, when this goes to, to bid for the construction documents and the, and the bidding, and then the contract administration. So total on that would be proposed to be 48,000. So we're at 48,000 in total with West Plains Engineering, 7,000 plus, plus two trips from Lakeview Lumber.
So the initial cost of that is going to be 19,000, and we can quit there if things don't proceed?
Correct. Yep.
So we're looking at the total of 55,000 plus for engineering and design?
Out of those, out of those two, remember, we do have a third, a third engineer involved already, too, that Beck who did the site plan work then, and that was 12,000.
But this same engineering firm that did the library?
Yeah. This is, this would then be the same setup that we utilized for the library expansion.
This will be paid for by the designated TIF fund they already have.
Out of TIF, yeah.
I thi- I think it's needed so we get to the final, what it's gonna cost.
Right.
Because I, I, I don't think we could come up with accurate cost figures without the engineer. I, I, how, where do we stand on donations?
The last? Yeah, we're just pretty close to the goal that we set as our initial goal, which is the 200,000. And we're propping a second fundraising mailer for this kinda early spring.
Is it, you're, you're talking 200,000, is that donations, or is that donations and pledges?
Well, that is a donation, Cap, because some folks, some folks gave over-
The pledges not cash in hand.
Some folks gave over a two-year timeframe. Cause when you're, when folks are given, you know, over $5,000, they spread that out over two years. Which is just typical fundraising operations in process. It's not atypical of, of any large fundraiser.
So do you know how much is a pledge, and how much is actually in the account right now? I'm just curious.
The foundation knows, but we don't.
Yeah, Connie's not here.
I think, though, that she shared with me that it's practically all donations except for a couple of large pledges. Like, one of the large businesses that pledged quite a chunk, you know, hasn't given us the cash yet. They just keep saying, "When do you need it?" And, you know.
Right.
So I think the actual money donation is pretty high.
Okay. What about, do you know the list of that original pamphlet with all the different grants that we were gonna apply for? Do we know where we're at with all of them? Do they chance? Cause I know we got 250 on the one, but we wanted 350, right?
Yeah.
That's right. We got 250 from the Great Places Grant. And then been awarded another 20,000 from this Rural Innovations Grant. Those are the ones that, that are funded. And then we applied for this, this water, the WQI water quality one.
That's what we use for the-
For the green infrastructure.
Power retention, so.
Yep, yep. So that, that is the one that's pending right now.
And then what, is, wasn't there one that we thought we were gonna get and we didn't?
Sac County Endowment.
The Sac County Endowment.
We will get that next fall. It wasn't a problem that they didn't wanna give it to us. It was a problem that it wasn't applied for correctly.
Oh, okay.
So we'll probably do that in two phases, and the CAT grant is-
The CAT grant's coming up this spring.
Yeah, that's the bigger grant that we'll apply for. Yep.
So we need a motion for, to continue with the proposal?
Can you all make the motion?
Second. Full call.
Moller.
Yes.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
No.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay.
Could I have a, could I ask a question? Cause I'm a little confused about what the motion was.
It's for, go ahead with the engineering. We're gonna send the, the plans up to engineer and have the plans drawn up.
Is this for all of the, when you, cause you had it split into electrical and whatever?
Yeah, it enters into, it enters into that, that proposal with, with Western Plains. So-
The mechanical guy plus the-
Yeah, plus, yeah, the structural guy from Lakeview Lumber, and then the proposal from Western Plains. The whole, the whole proposal from Western Plains. But that is, that is staged so that if we, only when we get past the first phase, with the second phase, the fees kick in.
So the motion is for the-
Everything.
Whole, everything. Okay. Thank you for that vote of support on behalf of hometown party.
Say, while, while we're discussing this stuff, I would like to go through a couple other things with you in, just to get an update about where we are on, on some of the parts of the project. First thing is that, that Beck engineering study, and that was in your packet then, it started on page 13. We had Beck do the site plan, give a proposal of what the site plan would, will look like, and knowing that we needed to have that to apply for this, this WQI grant. So that was the, that was the time push to, to have that done. And so you see what they did as far as the proposed site plan. Put together a nice-looking site plan. And that includes the, of course, the, the location of the builder, concrete driveways, and a few concrete parking spaces, as 208 spaces in there that are on a gravel parking lot. The big blue thing, like on page 15, the big, the big blue one, is a large retention pond that drains the entire site. So it, that would have permanent water level in it, so it's getting, it gets some water treatment that way before things go to the lake. But it holds the drainage from the entire site. And off on the east side there, it mentions where a couple of small bio-retention cells are directly east of the proposed building. So those would be two other small bio-retention cells to handle drainage from that area and from the roof.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just looking at, at page 16, that'll tell you a little bit about the pavement area, parking spaces, and then tells a little bit about the, the parking lot just in general. That, the parking lot itself is proposed to be a six-inch granular parking lot, and it has this thing called GeoGrid underneath it. So they prepare the subsurface, put this GeoGrid down, and, and then six inches of rock. And then you see on page 17 and 18, it gets through everything, like on soils, and just ran a very comprehensive analysis on, on the site plan. Page 19 shows the, the cost estimate on that. We needed to have them break out the parts that were the bottom of the page, the low-impact development, that's the amount for those grants. So we, we asked for a grant of half of that amount, and the other half were matching funds is, would be funded by a 319 program, which is through our, our watershed. And then the LPA has committed $5,000 match on that, too. So 118 on the bottom part for green infrastructure, and you see the 575 on the upper part as far as the site preparation.
So we don't need to add them two together, is what you're saying?
You do add, you do add them together.
You do add them together?
Yeah.
So there's 2,286 square yards of concrete?
Yes.
So is, in this proposal, is this a paved parking lot then?
No, that, that's the, the part on the picture around the building in the, in the horseshoe drive.
And that's 2,286 yards of the area?
Square yards. Yeah, cause the granular surface for the parking lot's about 8,000 square.
Okay. This seems like a lot.
Yeah, I see it, it's been, yeah. So that site plan is, you know, it's first draft of the site plan, but that's what we had submitted for that green infrastructure grant. Couple of other updates on that. I know we've talked about pro forma, and, and knowing the operations costs and stuff, and one of the specific things dealt with natural gas cost. And we're now then awaiting the furnace design on the natural gas before you really get to the notion of, of how much the operations costs are on the natural gas. So that furnace design will be one of the things to come out of this proposal from Western Engineering. And then the last thing, about land purchase, we had have all the contracts signed on the land purchase. We're awaiting the abstract to be completed, other than that, it'd be ready to close.
So do we need to do something with that ground this summer? Something was currently leasing or renting that, do we need to get an agreement with that person till?
We will be the owner of it by that time, yeah. Okay, and that, that's all I have.
Okay, the Stock Trail Trail Association, John.
I'm John, I'm representing the Stock Trail Trail Association for a group of Saff and Trail ground bike riders that basically support trail. But what we're proposing to do is we'd like to put that square sign down by Red Oak's House for, while people park to start the trail. Be similar to the one that you have, the kiosk, that it would list, not list businesses, but show where businesses are at town, campgrounds, bars, stores, et cetera. And the second picture, the one that says Madre, is part of the other phase that we're going to do, and that is put mile markers on the trail, road crossings. We gotta go through the county, get that approved yet, but like every road you cross, let's say 300th Street, 380th, 400th, Roland's, whatever, two reasons for that. One's for if there's an emergency, my credit will be able to tell, I have just crossed the street, or I can see the sign up ahead of me to help out with that. Basically, we're just looking for your blessing to put it down there kinda by Schulte Memorial, somewhere in that area, put more concrete underneath it, so wouldn't have to weed it around it, just drag more up to it, and they make the street for us.
And make a motion, we allow it?
So do it. Full call.
Beckman.
Yes.
Yep.
Moller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yeah, yes.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we got some brush pile site regulations.
Yeah, let's just take a look at the brush pile site regulations. Page 20 of, of the packet then. I just wanna talk through this so that everybody's on the same page. Just general rules of the brush pile site. You know, it lists the only things that are accepted out there, trees, brush, weeds, grass clippings, garden waste, and concrete. Okay, we don't accept lumber. And then only waste thrown or generated within Lakeview City, which can be taken to the dump. And plastic bags do need to be emptied and removed. Then we had a, a committee that was set up from the last council meeting. We did have our committee meeting, and would suggest these regulations then for use and maintenance of the brush pile site. So keeping separate piles for trees and brush, and separate piles for grass clippings, leaves, and garden waste. Okay, and the location would then be, be designated by signs, and Dean is starting to work on, on some signs already. February 22, we would, the items would be placed as shown on the aerial photo, so put back a couple pages. And this gives some idea about where we would be. The concrete on, on the south side, leaves and grass, clear, or clear on the west side, with the idea being that that is, is pushed off to the side, not burnt, just pushed over the edge. Okay, and then more towards the north, it would be where the brush would go, whereas, we'll talk, it would be periodically burned. See, there's a road that's proposed to go down to the south and around the back of all of the, of the dumped items. And that would be just, just clearing out some of the scrub trees and whatnot, make sure that they can get through there. Any, any ideas about how you're gonna do that?
Uh, brush mower on the skidler, I walked down through there, and there's a bunch of small little saplings and stuff, just sticking up. Our brush mower will mow right through there, so that the quick attack can get down and around to the side where in case leaves or grass, somebody burns it without permission, or somebody dumps some ashes that isn't controlled by us, starts on fire, they can get down there with a quick attack, instead of going over the side of the pile. Uh, it says campground, but we're not allowing, allowing camping out there.
No, but that's the, the-
That's the-
Just the idea is to make sure the ashes get dumped in a, in a separate location.
I thought that was an overflow.
Yeah, you have an update about, about anything campground ash-related?
Purchased a trailer. I saw it on Facebook, and I talked to Dale about it, Dave about it, Scott, I talked to Sandy about it, I talked to Eric about it. It, it's an all-metal trailer. The price was $250, and I got down there and I told the guy what we're using it for, and he got this look on his face. And he said, "Well, I haul my ashes with five-gallon buckets." You know, and then I talked to him about it, needed a hitch, tires weren't the greatest and stuff, and I asked him if he dropped down to $200. And he said, "No." He says, "If you don't pay the 250, I'm gonna use it for just what you said, and I'll take it off Facebook." I'm like, "Here's your $250," and brought it back, bought some tires and a hitch for it, and gonna make it look nice and paint it up. But it's all metal. They're gonna be able to dump their ashes in that, so it's-
So the idea here really being that they dump ashes in it when they clean up on Monday, and it can sit for the rest of the week, or it can sit through till the next Monday, and who dump the thing real quick, and before they fill, start to fill it up again. So just doing what they can to try to avoid any, any problems with the dump starting on fire. Okay, so see that, yeah, the leaves and grass clippings, garden waste, they would be pushed off towards, towards the west. That pile would not be burned as far as leaves and grass clippings. Okay, so it does have periodic burning for tree branches and other small woody materials. Yeah, it would, it would be great that the pile could be kept to small enough size that it would burn up in one day. Okay, again, we're not burning grass clippings, leaves, or garden waste. As far as large tree trunks, we do not anticipate that we're gonna burn those either. That they, the tree trunks would be, they can be set aside and available for anyone to take, okay? So that anybody could take those, no cost to the contractor, but certainly no cost to the city if they wanna come in and somehow try to take those. And, or they'd be pushed over the edge by, by the city staff or a contractor. It's proposed that these large trunks would not be burned. So how might, how might be, we be able to handle that with a grapple?
We're trying to get a King Welding up there in SAC to give me a price on what it's gonna take to get our old snow bucket, get a grapple made onto that, and then we can go in there with the backhoe and grab it. And if we have to cut it into little bit smaller chunks, depending on how big this trunk might be, we can grab it and throw it over the edge with our piece of equipment.
Okay, dump sites burned only as directed by the utility superintendent, and generally when the, when the wind's gonna blow the smoke out of town, okay, fires can only be lit by city staff. And generally, small fires would not be extinguished, but allowed to burn themselves out. Now, prior to, to lighting the, the brush on fire, city staff would, would notify city hall. We would keep a written log about when the, the dump is lit on fire, and as much as practical, try to notify the public, and that would be done via social media, if, if we have ample time to tell them we plan to burn it on tomorrow, or whatever it's gonna be. Okay, top of the next page then, in the event that a fire spreads to be much longer, larger than anticipated, may burn for a few days. Decision to extinguish the fire rests with the fire chief. And then safety of firefighters being top priority. I know they, you know, and that, and that would really be if something gets out of hand, otherwise it would, then I think that it would continue to burn. There's some groundwork that, that needs to be done. We talked about making this access road to provide the fire department access to the bottom of the old gravel pit. And then also there's, Dean, you know, that's what, one of the things about this plan is that it does require quite a little bit more staff time to make sure that we're managing stuff out there. And, and Dean certainly is, is aware of that. But even starting off with, like, all of the leaves and stuff go clear to the, go clear to the west, so it's cleaning all that top part off, getting, getting all of the rebar cut out of there, and, and making sure that, that it can, that you can drive all the way back there without any problems. And then one other thing that we had talked about, though, is would the council have any desire to basically haul some dirt out, out there and, and cover up the top of that? You know, we could, could address some of those concerns, and we can get dirt relatively cheap. We'd have Levi truck in some stuff from the back. But so, you know, by the time we do that, it'll be muddy all the time. So I'm interested in your thoughts about that, whether we'd be interested in doing that or not.
Doesn't Bob want to cut the metal that sticks up?
No, he flags them and tells us that they're there.
Oh, okay.
I drove around there the other day and with the pickup, and I'd hate to see if somebody from town took their car out there, they're gonna dump it by the gate, because it's, it's not very passable. But like you said, if you put dirt on top, it's just gonna be a muddy mess, and-
I, I know it, if it rains, number one, but it's gonna be muddy if it rains or not, and then it'll end up drying up, and that's when people start using it again.
Right.
A lot of that concrete needs to be covered up, cause it's just chunks and chunks and chunks, and the, or just when they're out there, they're in the dozer, and just bouncing around with all the concrete, you know? So it's just, in my opinion, needs to be covered up.
We're gonna make it work for everybody to drive back to the west. We're gonna have to have some type of way to get back, just smaller vehicles, and so I don't know why we wouldn't haul some dirt or something there.
Is this the west is clearly available out there?
Yeah, that's clear. Six, seven semi-loads?
There's gonna be a drop in the bucket.
I said, I thought we're gonna start off with 10 and see how, and see how much that-
You gonna get spread out with this skid mower?
Are you volunteering?
I, I do have one more suggestion.
Yes.
Instead of putting that access road inside the dump area, there's a gate to the south a little bit further.
Okay.
Keep that burned up along the south, so John Doe can't be driving back around there. Put a gate with a padlock on it, so only-
Yeah.
Of course, then that's gonna be bad for fire trucks, but if you put a gate across it, it'd slow people down from going back in there where they don't need to be.
If you lock it, we can have a key.
Yeah.
And where's that at?
It's just-
On the gravel road?
Nope, nope, it's just south of the entrance that's there.
Oh, yeah, that goes down and around.
It goes back down and around.
That'd keep- Yep.
Is this another entrance off of the Blacktop Road, or is it?
Mm-hmm. Okay. It was Carston's entrance, actually, when Carston's owned that property.
Okay.
I'll check it out.
Uh, last couple things about campground dash, making sure that's in a, in a separate location. And then educating the public. And really what we're looking at about education, again, large signs out there at the brush pile site that would denote where things are to be dumped. And then we'll work through social media and the, and the newsletter and traditional print media about, trying to get the word out about the importance of maintaining that site, and we need the public's, public's help in order to really make that come to be. And we'll also, you know, of course, tell them about the penalties for non-compliance.
Can we, can we put a letter in with the electric bill?
Yeah, we, we bill by postcards. So we, we, it would have to be a special mailing in order for that to happen. And-
At least we know everybody got it. If we're, especially if we're gonna enforce the penalties.
We usually give them a bunch of warnings before we ever do it.
Well, maybe that needs to stop.
I'd agree. If the fine was a thousand bucks, the police was pretty hesitant to give that ticket out.
Well, I'm not saying a thousand's the right number, but-
About a hundred bucks.
A hundred bucks wakes somebody up a little bit.
That's it, yeah.
Especially if they had a warning the week before, or the month before.
Flip a couple pages back to 23. This is the entire amount of our ordinances as it pertains to that brush pile site. So a couple things that the committee identified about our contractor permit is 25 bucks per year. They would certainly suggest that the council would, would increase that fee. They didn't suggest what a fee would be, but would look at, at having it increased. Rather, we just need to have a lot more interaction with contractors on that, too, cause ever since they don't come in to sign out a key or, or anything anymore, we may not even know they're there. So we'll be- So we'll be, uh, sending out applications, contractor permits to everybody who's, who's been there before.
You know, I, I'm, I'm kinda hesitant on increasing the fee because any, any fees you increase to a contract can get passed on to the people that got the homeowner and, and I think, you know, homeowners kinda feed out. And I, I'm good with letting the contractors keep them on top of them or often making them come and get the key or, or whatever, but you know, as soon as you lock that thing up too, you're into springtime and people are doing yard cleanup and stuff and and a lot of times when city halls closed.
Right.
Most of the time when city halls closed, whether it be weekend or after work, so locking the gate isn't, isn't really an option, I think. Keeping it on top of the contractors is probably, you know, what we really need to do. Because we got a camera out there watching the contractors and, um.
I think.
But I, I, I'd be against raising the fee because that's gonna be passed on to the homeowner, homeowner or us.
Because we only allow the contractors that are doing work in the city limits to dump it, correct?
Right, yeah, this stuff has to be generated from inside.
Right. I agree with Dave.
Do we need to add something into this ordinance that, that says something about the, the garbage bags and that or?
Oh, okay. Sure can.
I, I don't see nothing in there that they need to be.
No plastic bags, yep, sure can. Um, I circled number four where it's talking about access limited and I think that, uh, it's gotta be coming up on two years now, basically, since the dump's been open all the time. And, yeah, we haven't, we haven't closed it and have had really pretty decent, uh, compliance from the public about not having a whole lot of problems out there. And, uh, I think a lot of it comes back to the fact that we have these cameras out there now and we, we follow back and, and find folks who have, uh, have dumped out there and, and we've done that. Kay, Kay will sit there and watch the, this video for a couple hours and, and find out who had been out there at what time. So it can happen, uh, just, yeah, interested in your thoughts about, uh, whether there would ever come a time that we would, uh, limit access to that.
I, like I said, I don't think so. Whenever we're cleaning up yard waste or brush, it's always during the weekend or after work. When city hall's closed. You have to call PD out to unlock the gates.
Sometimes works, sometimes it don't.
Right, because they may be on something more important than unlocking the gate.
I know my phone rang a lot or I had people beating on my door on the weekends a lot when we locked it down.
So if we're not having, having any issues out there, I'd say keep it unlocked.
Have been your major stuff wrong, catching plastic bags once, wanted to pick them up.
Yeah, I guess, but we have that access limited section there and I'd like to maybe rewrite that just to, uh, basically say that, that, uh, you know, it's the intention that the, the dump site would, would remain open, um, but that it, it can be closed then during, uh, basically when there's trouble times, you know, if, if people are, are posing problems, that we could go ahead and lock.
Right.
Come up with some type of, of language on that.
So you would propose to not adopt it tonight, wait till we have these changes?
Well, I need to write up, uh, some ordinance changes and then any, any ideas about penalties?
I would say we need to get into a realistic number so we can enforce it and wake them up a little bit.
Yeah, it's gotta be enforceable.
Yeah.
So a cou- a couple of things, you can stipulate the amount of penalty that you would like to have, if you would like. The other thing is that if, if a penalty is not stated, it's just a municipal infraction, okay? Now, uh, and we would cite them as a municipal infraction and then it goes to the magistrate who determines what fine it is.
I would say we can. Hundred bucks first time, two fifty the second time, then get to five hundred the third time, because that don't, hundred don't get their attention, two fifty, right? But then it's still low enough that you can, when I say low enough, it's still a, a figure that.
It's enforceable.
Right.
One person's gonna get it.
It's enforceable.
Somebody's gonna hear and go, well, and I ain't that one, I don't think.
Right.
Right.
Okay, well, I would intend to, uh.
How long is our agreement with, uh, Hancock for them to keep, continuing to put, uh, concrete down there?
Yeah, I don't know that we have a, uh, even a written agreement, it's just more of, of an understanding and, uh, we need to get out and talk with Hancock, which I've not done yet. We can encourage them.
Because that, that original conversation was back with Westside, I think. And it's changed hands like three times and so, twice anyway.
And it is, yeah, yeah.
In the past, they would pay for a pushback, one time the city would pay for a pushback, the next time, but over the years, they bailed out of their time to push back.
Well, I see the last time we spent was worth just like forty-five hundred dollars.
Four thousand bucks, oh, you got.
And if we're gonna do that street, is it Lake Street?
Hurley.
No.
Oh, Hurley, yeah.
Lake Street.
Lake Shore.
We're gonna do the, Lake Shore Drive, we're gonna have a bunch of concrete then and hopefully whoever we hire can dump it way in the back instead of spreading it out, we have to push it back.
Well, is it trade or taking some of that or can't we?
He's taking the wood.
He's taking the wood part of it and, and so far he hasn't, he hasn't worked things out with his family issues in order to allow them to take the concrete out.
He'd like to have it, but his family member doesn't want it.
But she still has intentions of coming to grind and smet, but I don't know when he's gonna get it. Keep telling me, yeah.
All right, so I'm going to, uh, I'll prepare an ordinance, uh, change to be considered next time that, that'll reflect this. But what's your thoughts on policy in general, are we good to go with policy?
Yeah.
Well, I think so.
Looks good.
It's a starting point.
Yep, can we have a motion to approve the policy?
Second?
Second.
Rule call.
Wolman?
Yeah.
Mulrath?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Stankin?
Okay, Camp Crescent rules and operations.
Hey, Sandy, can I have you come up here and?
Ordinance five twenty.
Yeah, it's a docket.
A docket.
Yeah, you skipped over.
Remember that? Jesus, well, hang on a second, we'll have the second reading of ordinance five twenty. Motion to approve. Do we have any comments on it? Any?
Second.
Oh, we need a motion to approve, second reading, second?
Second.
Rule call.
Okay, Wolman?
Yeah.
Mulrath?
Yes.
Frank?
No.
Beckman?
No.
Stankin?
Okay, Camp Crescent rules and operations. We're waiting on fifteen minutes.
Speak up nice and loud for the whitey canary.
Um, so we've already kind of went over the rules, I've talked about this stuff before, we just never made decisions and we wanna get the, um, pamphlets printed. So I didn't know if I needed to review this stuff with you guys so we can get decisions, like on the dogs, I'd like to, um, have the language in the pamphlet be the same as the city as far as the pit bull and the rottweilers. And the reason for that is because if they call the police and ask them what the rule is, they read what the city rule is and then they get to the campground from out of town with their dogs and are, are the, says no rottweilers, I believe.
Right, yeah.
So we just want it to match.
City code is just pit bull terriers, I think, is all it's uh.
I think they should match.
It, yeah. I guess just in, in general, expect that at some point, somebody's gonna bring a, an issue about having to read specific ordinance and, and that's um, been difficult to defend and so far, our insurance company hasn't asked us to drop our, our restriction, but we can expect that maybe sometime.
Up until then, I guess we can just continue.
So change it to match the cities in the pamphlet?
I would think so.
Okay, um, the kennels, I think I said this at the last time we talked about this, to me, a caged dog's better than ones running loose. Um, the kennel problem back in its day was they were puppy milling, bringing in all these puppies, but there's already a rule now in place that it says only two dogs per campsite. So I think that's gonna help on that, um, but I, I would like to see the kennel rule back in there um, instead of letting them let their dogs run around crazy. They're supposed to be on a six inch lea- or six foot, six inch, a six foot leash, um.
It's enforceable.
The leash thing, we go around, we have dogs at the office all the time, then we have to go all the way to the campground and find out whose dog it belongs to.
It's not been enforced.
No.
Not even close.
And when they bring it to my attention, I go after it.
Well, it needs to be enforced, it needs to be looked at, I'm, I'm sorry, but it's not forced and there's dogs on leashes thirty feet long down there.
I would be okay with the no dog rule.
Me too.
Me too.
Everywhere.
You're right.
And it's a mess.
And they don't clean it up.
We were told we'd lose half our campers if we didn't let them wash it.
Because, I, I agree, most of the campers have dogs and I listen to them bark.
But then it comes down again to an enforceable rule.
It has to be enforced.
Has to be enforced, you put all the rules down, if you don't enforce them, they're no good.
That's right.
But you have to have staff to do that, you can't be two places at once.
Honestly, yes, it's what we do on our evenings is run around and do the rules, it's all, you know, it's like, you can't do this, can't do that, can't do this, that's what we do.
I would think some would know the rules here pretty soon and they keep breaking them and there's out the door.
Well, I think the last time, um, we talked, we have a deal where we can initiate a fifty dollar fine, it's in the pamphlet. Um, I think probably that is the thing, just like this other fee thing, start enforcing the fee and once more to get that fine, that then maybe the rest are gonna hear about it and but there is a fifty dollar fine line in the pamphlet about the dogs.
Then, then again, it just needs to be enforced, we have to make sure.
Is that a question that can be asked when they register, you know, do you have dogs?
It's not, right on the registration, they have to click, they gotta click to know.
And they know about the six foot leash.
It's right on there and everything, yep.
So they're not being informed, it's just that they're not abiding by the rule.
That's a lot of the people there.
Yeah.
We have stop signs in town, people don't pay attention to it.
Just this one right doesn't make two rights.
Do, do the best you can. This needs to be enforced. From what I've seen, you've been doing a good job, Phil.
I'd like to do the kennel thing, um, because they get created then. And we break, then we have to tell them to take the fence down, like, they literally will put like this high of fence between two campers all the way around, then they got their campfire in the middle. And I don't, I don't like that idea either, you know, and you gotta go tell them to take their fencing down. They're like, well, you said we can't have a kennel, well, it's kinda what you're doing, you're kenneling your dog in this space. So at least I'm just saying this, if you guys don't like them, I'm just saying.
Kennels or pet fins and that's what a pet stand is to me. I have seen them all fenced up around like that.
But if you limit the size of it.
Right.
You know, that's a kind of, that's kind of a good.
That's why I went down to the forty-two inches to, to make the size.
That's, that's a good idea, I think.
Which were the right.
I'm just out for help, this is where, this is one of our issues we face every weekend.
So forty, forty-two inches means what, Sandy?
It's like, can, the forty-two is the widest at any point it can be and they don't, I don't find very many online that's forty-two by forty-two, they're more like forty-two by twenty-seven.
Yeah, they're more rectangle.
Yeah, they're rectangle.
I just don't like the idea of the kennel. I mean, if you enforce the rule that the six a, six foot leash or whatever, I don't think you need the kennel.
I'm open to suggestions, whatever you guys decide is, I'm gonna work with.
So, so it's not an either or thing is what you were saying, if we.
The, the, right now, there's no kennels.
Right.
Yeah.
What's, what's so bad about a kennel?
It's, there's a lot of dogs out there that don't get kennelled out, I mean.
But can, can we have it, would you have a forty-two inch kennel or?
Or a six, yeah, it's not, yeah, I would say, yeah.
A mastiff.
Either or.
Is that what you mean then?
Yeah.
Either or.
Yeah, I'm not someone that brings a kennel now, we're not doing the leash thing.
Right.
That's, it's either or, but again, then it needs to be enforceable if they're breaking that.
Right.
Then I really wanna use that fifty dollar fine thing and I guess I've never really asked like, is that something I enforce or the police enforce that fifty dollar fine? Like, I've never got the clarification on how that works.
Well, I think the police have to enforce.
Yeah, I don't think it should fall on you.
Okay.
You got enough stuff to do.
Yeah. Yeah, they bite people and we've had it all down there.
We'll have to try to inform the police if they have to go down there and call and give them.
Yeah, we do, we've had them down there several times because of dogs. I, I got pictures of this one lady's hand that got bit. Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, and, and the dog was on a leash. Yeah, it's, okay, um, this is just another idea thoughts, I'm beginning this just because it's so dangerous and I could even go to ten o'clock on this, but the bike rule. Um, for the little kids, I mean, I know adults ride their bikes to the bars and stuff, but like at eleven o'clock at night, I'm getting phone calls that, like, some kid almost got hit because they're still tearing around, because that's like an easy way for the parents for babysitting thing, go ride around the campground on your bicycle. I've had one parent, she was gonna go buy, um, light reflectors to, for us to hand out to people that have bikes, just so they can see them better. Um, and, and we don't even have to do anything with it, I just want you to know it's a huge problem and I was looking for a solution and I don't know.
I like the idea of this nine P M. for kids, I really do.
But what, how old's a kid?
Eight.
Well.
It can't be any bike, because, I mean, they, they drive, they ride them uptown and back.
Well, once, how about, once they get to the campground, they walk their bike into the campground?
Oh, for the adults? Well, see, we're not, we're not gonna see that because it's after ten o'clock.
Yeah, you won't see that.
We're not gonna see that, what I see is like these little kids, I'm talking little, little kids.
That's what I would be concerned with too, because they're, they're zipping it out of the vehicles and it's dark out.
Yeah.
Twelve and under?
Yeah. That's all that they're doing.
That's the same, that's the number we use for like mini golf, that's the, the breakout.
You remember. They'll lie to you and tell you that they're fourteen anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, at least, at least then we have a rule to work with, with the parents, because the parents, and we go to them like, hey, your kids are all over and they about got hit, they don't. We're camping, sorry, so, oh, we're camping, so, so go with the twelve?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, another thing, site posts, they get pulled out, um, and I know Eric, he's con- he's concreted them in and everything. Um, but we have literally people come take the site posts out so they can get their camper in and then they're over their actual part that they are allowed to rent, so they have more space. Um, and I know some people aren't good backer uppers and it's a way for them to easily back in, they pull the post out and then put it back and get their camper in the right spot, right, Scott?
I don't know that I've actually be, ever pulled the post, but I'd be inclined to do that, because I.
Um, and we just have a few spots down there and it's, um.
I would think we should mark the spots and put a sleeve in there so they can be pulled to, to get in easily and then, again, it goes back on the staff to make sure they're in their spot. Because I've sit and watched people and I've watched them run over posts trying to back camp.
There's broken ones right now.
Yeah, and it's congested down there, I think we should try and sleeve them so they can easily remove, campers aren't getting too sore and then it's put them back in. It doesn't have to be in every spot, but the ones that we're struggling with who are getting back in and out that are removing them.
So then they would be responsible for monitoring to make sure they're right in that spot, once they get in.
Right.
We got the tall ones with square tubing in the ground, so they roll the rocker.
Some PVC two, square tubing for four by four or whatever, our signs are made out of four by fours, I think, the posts are. And they make, the lumberyard sells that vinyl stuff that you put in the ground and slide it right down inside, don't you?
I'm not sure what vinyl stuff you're talking about.
Like a wrap for a four by four or a deck post.
Yeah, but that wouldn't hold up if you got hit once or anything.
It's gonna be in the ground.
If that part's in the ground, four by fours slide it down into it.
The folding hole.
Right.
How much is that?
How much? You'd get a couple, couple of them sleeves out of one post to remove the, that one.
I think that's what you're doing in troubled spots, it'd be cheaper than replacing the post.
Right, because they, they allow it out at stateside, I know, because.
So we don't have to have like another rule in the, um, pamphlet, because like, there's like a page and a half, it's just all the rules. May, basically, we, can we still write in there, you're, you only are allowed the site area that you're renting, not to go over the, like, can I, yes, work with Scott to get verbiage better on that? All right, um, and again, this is just food for thought, um, the lakefront sites, um, it's one of the things we hear every single weekend as well that they wish there was some that weren't people that were there the whole time and it's just an idea was to use two or four out of the middle and have. And it's just an idea was to use two or four out of the middle and have them be just a two week limit. And the way it would be monitored is just the exact same way we do it now, you can't go online and rent a lake spot, you have to come talk to us at the office. And then we can chart it in the, um, program, we block them out, so like, the ones that live there, we just go from April fifteenth to October first, and the whole thing's blocked out. Um, we would just block out two week periods. I'm just trying to figure out a way to let other people.
I think you're giving up, you're giving up.
Two sites, how about do two sites?
What's that?
Do two sites and see if, if that works.
Two. Um, I kinda went through to look to see how much was open through, like last year, and occasionally there would be a spot open, but they're so used to them always being full, if we, if I could advertise it on that. That those aren't just two week spots. And well, again, we take care of it all at the office, it's just like the ones that are there.
Two weeks, could they come back and get the same spot again, or they've done?
Well, we have, we're trying to come up with ways that they couldn't like book it in somebody else's name and just stay there. Like, that's, yeah, that would all be in the verbiage, yeah.
What, what is the difference between lakefront rental fee and lot eighteen?
Um, the lakefronts at this time are the exact same price as A, section A, um, and I believe like where the, um. The seasonals, I think they're, all of those are the same price.
Fifty amp electric are the same as.
Fifty amp is the same as the lake, lakefront, but lakefront is all thirty amp except for one post has, um, so two spots do get fifty.
So we're upgrading it this year.
That's what my.
We wanted to do, to run that study to know that we don't have any electrical problems, but Jeff is, is ready for a, for a project.
To make sure we can handle the load by upgrading.
Enough pedals.
And these spots are not reserved, I think we need to raise our rates on the lakefront sites. And here's my justification for it. I talked to Scott about it, or explained it to Scott, pick a house around the lake, I don't care what house you pick. Look at the property taxes they pay on the ground. And they're renting the spot for less than they're paying property taxes.
And poop and dog food everywhere.
Correct. I, I, it's, it's lakefront property and they're, can't, and that will help eliminate some of those guys staying there all year long. Fee, and the fee needs to be raised, in my opinion, on the lakefront lots.
Do I have to wait a year to change it?
No, because they're not reserved.
It's not reservable.
So you can raise them.
Right, so like, we had already talked, Scott and I, like, if we do put the electric in, for sure, we're already gonna raise the rate to help cover for the electric.
I wouldn't be opposed to seeing a four dollar difference a day.
I'm like a rental, whatever.
I'm not either, but you know, they got, like, it's lakefront.
Yep.
And they're there.
They're there, they want them.
That's right. And you'll find out how much the difference is pretty soon, if they're on the lake or not on the lake.
We'll decide.
That's right.
So we think we can do two spots, like, it can be a trial thing if, if, if May and June don't look great, then.
Yeah.
They try to see what you like. No. Cause none of this stuff, all this, lake stuff has to be done a year in advance or.
No, none of it does, I think it can be by trial.
No, no, but, uh. The lakefront, I don't have enough pets to do the whole lakefront on hand right now. So, I'd call down to the order room. And he slapped me, he said, um, you might be lucky to see them by July. So. Sandy and I talked to like, go to each end, do so many in, and then the center would leave the way it was till we get, till fall. If we can get these pets in, then try to do the rest of them in fall at the end of the year maybe, or something of that sort.
How many are you short?
Two, I think.
You're short two?
I believe so.
Well, then it'd be the two spots that you can only stay for two weeks, and then when you get them in July, we could change them out then, when somebody's not there.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Sure does.
Cause we don't have to dig nothing up, right?
Just back around and, and hook them pull out, I'm hoping that's.
Right.
So, two spots though, is only one pole. One pole is this, so, he's talking, right, you're talking two.
Right.
One pet. Two pets, I believe.
So be four, be four spots, right.
We could work with whatever's in there, July coming today, we wanna upgrade this service to fifty amp, you know, and who knows, there might not be anybody there even, so.
I, I could get it down to one pet, but then at least we know pets if something gets run over, so then I don't wanna do that either.
Cause that happens.
So, I'd basically say in four spots.
Yeah.
If they run over them, do they pay for them?
If you could catch them.
They will can catch them if you want them.
They weren't, I have a good view. They weren't as high prices I thought they were gonna be either, I was thinking they were seven, eight hundred bucks and they come back about five hundred of these. So, that's upside, I guess.
While we're talking about rates, I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, but what's our city per, Scott, how does that read?
On the employees?
Yep.
I think it's five dollar camping for, um, any city employee.
But not on major holidays, right?
Five dollar reduced rate or five dollars?
No, it's five bucks.
The rate is five dollars.
Five bucks.
Yeah.
So can we? Can we adjust that?
Sure, it, that is a.
Or talk about it anyway?
It is a, uh, just a policy of the city, and certainly it's just subject to change from the city council.
Well, I don't think a city employee, no offense Jeff.
Well, matter of me, it's not an offense to you, it's good.
Uh, but I don't think a city employee should be able to camp down there all year long for five dollars a day.
I kept it one week in a year, so it don't matter to me.
I think we should, I think we should have some type of like a five or six day limit.
I don't think we've had, this year, there was no city employee was there that stayed.
No, but in the past, there was, and that, city employee's not here no more, he parked his camper down there all year long, let the air conditioner run, he didn't stay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it might be better, as Dale's referring to, put it in writing just so that it's there, you know.
Right.
Right.
That's my, this is my opinion only, um, but yeah.
It's about major holidays, like, do you want them doing it like when I need the camp spots for?
I say, it's always just been understood that if, if, if city employees are down there on, on any time when the spot would otherwise have been rented, they'd pay full price.
They pay full price, so that's your major holidays, like carnival and memorial and labor day, that was my understanding, Fourth of July, okay, yep.
But I think that should be.
Do you want to charge them half rate or what?
Huh?
You wanna charge them half of the normal rate or more?
I don't, I don't care what the rate is, as long as we have five or six days limit per year. And, and, that's just me, it's just me. There's four other people that might have a different opinion.
I'd be okay with a seven day limit for, for employees, and if they wanna stay over that, then they need to pay full rate, full, full rate after that.
Seven day for a year.
And, and I think because the lakeside lots are such a hot topic, I don't, I would also like to throw in there to make sure the city employees are not taking.
Are not taking those off.
Had to reduce rate.
Right.
They wanna camp there, they can sure camp there, but they're paying the normal rate.
I got a beach.
Right, so seven days and then.
Does that make sense? I mean, does everybody understand what I'm getting at there?
Yes.
So.
So what's the price, is it stays at five dollars or what do you want?
Five dollars with a limit of seven days.
Five dollars with a limit?
Limit to seven days per season, five, five dollars per night, no lakefront lot.
And if they wanna go on that, on that lake shore, then they pay full price.
If they wanna go.
Well, if you do that, I click you right on there.
Or if they come on a holiday weekend.
Right.
Yeah, five dollars on a concrete pad in section A, it's a pretty darn good deal.
The fee for lakefront, so it had been mentioned about four dollar increase for lakefront, so are you ready to move on that?
I'll make a motion to move on that.
I'll second that.
All right, so this would mean to add, add four dollars, uh, per night to, uh, to lake.
Make eighteen dollars?
Twenty-two.
So it'll be twenty-two dollars?
No, it's twenty-two now.
Oh, it's twenty-two now, yeah, I'm thinking of, okay, they get, they stay six and they get the sum of night free.
All right, so, yeah, I think the motion is to add four dollars per night to lakefront, uh, lot rental, so, um, Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mortar?
Yes.
Walton?
Yep.
Stankham?
Yes.
Very good.
Are we gonna do anything about the cabins? I'm just asking.
Yeah, um, so the old cabin is forty dollars, the new cabin is fifty, and I think we talked at one meeting, we're going to make them all the same price.
I think they all go fifty this year, yeah, yeah.
They all go fifty.
Yeah.
Um, another, it's just, uh, it's a thought, I'm trying to figure out a way to, um, let, get the pressure off of town bay parking. And, um, again, this is what we do on Friday and Saturday nights, is run around and tell people to move their vehicles. It's just a thought, I'm open to suggestions, um, the, on the parking map, the ones that are in green, those. I mean, I see two cars parked in these spots all the time, we gotta tell them to move, but the spots are large enough to have two vehicles. It would be on just those outside ones up there, like one through twenty-seven, uh, fifty-one through ninety-one. The rest of the spots are just way too little, well, the A section, but we don't want extra cars there, cause it's all the grass. That's, then we done.
I will open up a can of worms. Um, I'm not in favor of two vehicles in there when it's congested, it's bad enough the way it is with one. We had a fire call down there one night, we couldn't get to the campsite with our equipment. So I think we need, this is only me, I think we need to stay to the one, one vehicle per campsite, and I also think, uh, golf carts could be counted as a vehicle.
They have a golf carts, are there, are there not?
We can change that. That's just my opinion, a golf cart's a heck lot smaller than a car. And there's a lot of people, I'll use Mark and Tammy on, for example. They could pull their golf cart in and out of there, it's a lot less space used than a vehicle, than their pickup.
It's the first thing I asked for when I got the job.
I, I remember that, but I'm just saying that I think it will help ease some congestion for, especially them permanent ones, but I think it needs to count as a vehicle. So it's not one golf cart and one vehicle, it's one golf cart or one vehicle.
One or the other.
One or the other. So I'll use, since I mentioned Mark and Tammy, if they have their pickup in their campsite, they can't have their golf cart too, they can have their golf cart, but not their pickup or their car, does that make sense? And I'm using them as an example, because I.
What are we gonna do with the volleyball part, like, is that gonna get turned into anything or more parking? Like, again, yes, I'm just trying to figure out a way to, the, on the weekends, you can't get through town bay in the parking lot, it's crazy. Um, so my other thought was, if we let, like, a lot of these people, um, one forty, one thirty-nine through one sixty-four, they have boats, so do some of the lakefront people, and they sit out in the town bay all week. Maybe we let them park, and I've talked to Mark, Eric about this, let them park in the red spot, and that would be eight, ten, twelve boats that aren't out in the parking lot all the time, these are our campers.
That's where the overflow parking used to be, the red spot.
But is it for boats and trailers or just for cars?
It's either or.
Either or.
Cause like, I'll really wish it.
We actually used to, we actually used to let people park their camper there during the week.
Yeah. Why you have that all the time, is that a rule?
I don't know if it's a rule, but that's what used to go on, they'd park there for like the dollar day or something.
Pull it out of their sites so they aren't paying the site fee and, and park it there.
That was done years, for lots of years.
Must've been reasonably quiet.
Yeah, well, if you start parking campers in there, then, then you have a problem with the cars again.
I don't know what the reason.
Right.
I just said, I just said, that used to be the overflow parking, and campers used to park there during the week.
Because the campers are gonna take up both sides.
And I think that changed when you changed the entrance, didn't it?
So, well, we locked that gates, locked all the doors except for on Sunday, Sunday morning at eight o'clock, we unlock it, it's the only time it's unlocked the whole week. Is because apparently they would sneak in that gate, and we couldn't see them coming and going, so they locked it.
Right.
But some, so for example, years ago, a camper would pull out on Sunday night, they'd park their camper, leave it down in that overflow area, and Friday they'd come back, hook up their camper and pull them back in the campsite. That's what was used for years ago.
And, and we would charge them two bucks a day, if, if it was parking.
Yeah.
But if we let them stay in the campground, then we'd get more money.
I'm fine with that too. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that's where it was used for, that's always was used for overflow parking before.
And we, we made a sign, like, when we did the sign project, we have a big sign now, it says overflow parking is right there. Um, you know, like, we talked that we're gonna send a letter out to our seasonals, um, we talked about that at the very beginning, I mean, that would be one thing to like, put in that letter, like, for the seasonals, you know, if you guys would park your boats and trailers back there. It's just that many more spots we have out in the, in town bay.
We have a, we have an horrible three camp, park for more than seventy-two hours, one spot. Right?
In town.
In town.
Yeah.
It's never been enforced.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure if that's on, just on the right away deal or not, but, uh, we, in general, we wouldn't allow extended parking down there at the, at the, at the. At the boat ramp parking area, like I said, it just, it just needs to be enforced.
And we talked about that now, like, the, the, the natives, the locals are parking down there.
Right.
Yeah. And that we're gonna enforce that this next season. I was just a thought, I'm just open to anything for help, I mean, this is again. Friday, Saturday nights, this is what the night crew does, they go around with the golf cart and tell people move vehicles. It could be a perk, we could charge another dollar per spot for the ones that can have two vehicles.
I'm totally against two vehicles. That's me, I'm one of five, but I was in that fire truck, I couldn't make it to that.
I, I believe, I don't know how you guys could get through right now, like, on the lakefront.
Right.
That's why I didn't follow up.
And, and that, and that camper was in this green area. I'm in site fourteen, thirteen or fourteen.
Uh, you know, one negative thing about the campground is congested, I guess I would agree with that one, the car.
But it could be a golf cart or a car.
That's my opinion.
I, I, I like that idea, just because, like you say, the locals, they can just zip in there with their.
Well, then we have to change our signs, cause you all voted no golf carts.
Well, I think it was the no golf carts was, again, part of the congestion and part was, was the safety of the smaller kids and stuff, or even the golf cart when somebody else is in a big pickup backing up, you know? And they're zipping through there.
But they go with the golf cart, don't open up, uh, well, let's drive around with golf campground.
It might, but they can drive around with a car.
Uh, less likely.
Less likely, but I'm just saying, I've sit there and watched it, it's only my opinion, I'm one of five, I just threw it out there. They drive around all the time, we, the, our, our police department's done a good job this past year of eliminating kids driving that aren't old enough. They did a good job of getting that halted, as long as we stick to that where nobody under sixteen or nobody has the driver's license, can't be driving, doesn't work.
And then the rule about how many seats are on the golf cart, that's how many people's on the golf cart, cause I've seen them pile them on, I have too. And I, and my thought is, I'd rather get hit by a golf cart than a pickup. You know, like.
So that, that's, that's my two cents, whereas. Signs are, signs are easy to change.
So let me ask you this though. Yeah, so if we say golf carts, are they going to be trailer in their golf cart? The out of the town people, are they gonna trailer, and then we got another vehicle and a trailer? Cause they, they want their golf cart in town?
They will.
Yeah, I'm trying to eliminate all the vehicles, but then again, what are we gonna do with the volleyball court?
Have they ever used, they ever used two at a time?
Well, not no more, cause they got vandalized. And for the most, it's only, it's just usually the one, occasionally you'll have them both, but for the most, it's the one.
But we could get by with one and then put fourteen in the other. Some lay something on a truck.
Somewhat, you would need to really see how that lays out, cause it, it's not big enough to get any substantial amount of cars in there, it's not like you'd have two rows of cars in there. It, it's, uh, it's a, it's a lot of land, but it's not that much.
Well, I'd push it out further in the grassy area, I'd make it bigger than what the sand volleyball court part is.
I think maybe the council should make a trip down there, the, the next meeting, talk about the volleyball court issue, what we can do with it.
You could have a committee.
Fireproof meetings.
Yeah.
If it's really cold, I probably won't go.
So we can table the whole parking thing for now.
I'm all for using that red spot as parking.
Oh, yeah.
Should be.
Well, let's, can we say this, we're gonna table, you guys go look, and then we'll make the decision about the golf carts and the parking and all that at one time.
Parking area.
And, uh. Yeah, assuming, assuming that, that we're, we don't have a coat of snow on the ground, we'd plan to get together maybe before the next council meeting. We'd plan to get together maybe before the next council meeting, go down there and take a look around and, get some ideas about what we might do with the volleyball court, and then have this discussion about golf carts and parking and stuff.
Thank you. Um, and then I guess the reason we're trying to get these decisions, um, it's time to start making the pamphlets or getting them updated. I've asked Scott his thoughts on it, um, we have the cheesiest pamphlets and as much marketing has been in Lakeview, the one thing that looks awful is our black and white printed out of the office upstairs pamphlet. Um, we would like to make it a nicer one, like all the other pamphlets that we hand out down there. Normally, otherwise, we just call Kay, hey, we need another two hundred and fifty, and she sits there, runs them off and.
But what we talked about is, is we can see if we can work with Angie Bennett again on, on some brochure design. And we find out that by the, the printing cost on that is actually just not significantly different than us doing it in the house. But, uh, there'd be some additional layout charges and, and of course, fees for, for her talent, but.
I kind of talked to Connie about it, and they're all excited about it, um, y'all, Lakeview has a new logo, and I just pitched the idea of putting Camp Crescent right above the word Lakeview, so that would be like our logo for the campground, it'd be the same. Everything, it's just in smaller letters or above like you'd say Camp Crescent.
Oh, good.
Alright, well, we'll get to work on that stuff, and I guess the only other thing is Scott, how many people have applied for any of the jobs? You have any applications? Two of them?
I got two of them today because we posted them on, on Indeed, you know, get some local folks out there.
Right. Um, so, um, I just kind of threw out there what I would like to see as far as, um, help, and that would be in like the most perfect ideal world, and it's not gonna happen, I know that. So it's just something you guys need to decide is what you're paying, or if we're gonna keep the pay the same or change it.
Well, we're so busy all the time, we can't go shorthanded all the time like you did last year, that, that didn't work.
Well, um, I don't want you to think I don't work down there, um, I don't put myself on the schedule because like I just clock in almost every single day.
I, I talk to you quite a bit down there.
Yeah, um, I write my name on the schedule when I have to, know that I have to be there, cause there's nobody else to take that spot. And like I just randomly did July because somehow all my, um, schedules disappeared. Um, I happened to have this one on the phone, like, and then when there's circles, that's, the days remain short, we didn't have people to work. So I just tried to kind of explain to you what a perfect world would look like and kind of show you what it looks like. Um, I think we're just gonna have kind of tough time paying somebody eleven dollars to clean toilets, and that's their job.
I agree.
And I cannot tell you, except for Scott could, because I shared some photos with him every once in a while.
Yeah.
Of what we actually have to do, and what we have to clean up.
It's terrible.
It's terrible. Probably the worst one is this, um, the chart one. Every week, somebody does it in the urinals or just does it on the floor, or in the garbage can or in the sink, you just never know where you're gonna find it, except for in the toilet.
There's even a sign there.
So, um, that's just something you guys need to decide before we start interviewing and.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this out there, if we somehow structured other stuff, because you mentioned, uh, one of our last meetings, um, something about we work at seven thirty to eleven thirty or something like that, so you could be out doing whatever it is you do. And then you also said that you needed Ruth because you didn't have time to learn the reservation program thing. If we structured some of the other things like the bump outs or whatever for somebody else to take care of, so you could spend more time at the campground.
That's what I'm asking.
Your job, it, to me, is the campground manager, so you should be there.
Right, it's just, but Dave, we have so many projects that, um, like.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to, trying to get you so you could spend the time at the campground versus.
But when it's like the labor intense part, like for instance, the bump outs, and a lot of this is gonna get done before we get really busy, and hopefully by May fifteenth, we gotta bring in all the dirt for the boxes, we gotta plant all the plants. Like I wouldn't expect one person to do that by themselves, I'm gonna go help them.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking.
But I would love to just have a bump out person.
I'd, I'd rather see you at the campground and let the, uh, what's the title that Eric has, that person being whoever that, I know Eric wants to cut back, so if we have to hire somebody else or whatever for that job, have them do it.
There is somebody.
Do you have a bug at my house?
What?
Do you have a bug at my house?
No. Go ahead.
Because I was just talking about this today, I think we need to go back to splitting them up. Campground manager is managing the campground, and our parks worker, lead parks guy manages the parks. And if it has to be a full-time guy, it could be a full-time guy, cause there's stuff that they could do in the off-season. Years ago, we had that, and that seemed to work well.
So why, why did we, uh, go move away from that then?
I have no idea.
Well, Neil, Neil retired, and, and instead of filling with another full-time position, we, we did go to seasonal, seasonal guys then.
And I think, I think a full-time employee myself, you know, trimming trees in the wintertime, maintenance on the lawn mortars or equipment, or what be it in the wintertime, off-season, it would be.
And it'd be the, it'd be a lead guy, and Eric and, what's the other guy's name?
Mark.
Mark, both wanna cut back hours, so you can't have a lead guy there part-time. We need a lead guy there all the time, and the part-time guys follow his lead, and they can work together with that. I think would be the right approach to take.
I just think we're gonna need to look into that, something that we can't decide tonight.
Right.
Right. But like we have a person, I mean, there is an individual that is interested in just doing the bump outs uptown, uptown. They don't wanna be in the campground office, they don't wanna do many golf, they just want to focus, they love Main Street, and they wanna just work on bump outs, you know, but I don't know, we just never really got to cross that bridge yet, so.
I think that's something, it's a table, it's just.
I can just tell you I'm pulled in every direction, like, you guys hired me to bring in ideas, so I got the ideas, but there's nobody doing the work, so that's what I'm doing, I'm out working on all these projects and picking up sticks and pottery.
And pulling yourself away from the campground, which needs to be a trial.
Yeah, I honestly, guys, it's a lot.
So let's, let's take a look at that, um, call it leads, parks worker, if we wanted to call it that, um.
Like a full-time real job, like with benefits and everything, is that what you're saying, or just?
Open for discussion.
Yeah.
To find out who would get applying for these jobs, so that you can kind of determine what their job duty is going to be, or you need to tell them that right away, or what.
I would like to be telling them kind of upfront, like this is what we're looking for, cause there's so many questions, like, well, what do I gotta do?
This is your job description.
Yeah, I don't know yet, cause I don't know how many other people are gonna apply, and if it's just you and me, guess what you're doing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have to put a description together before we start, Wendy, so we tell them right up front.
So let's hook into that more, I think. Do you think?
I didn't say, since you're a bug at my house, yeah.
Sorry, baby.
Somebody younger.
There shouldn't have seemed like a look on your face when I looked at you.
I think one time we figured out between myself and Ruth and Mark and Eric, I think our average was like sixty-seven or something like that. So we get a younger person that.
Leo, bless his heart, did a great job when he was here. And everybody thought he was out driving around doing nothing, but he got everything done, everything was sprayed, everything was maintained.
Organized.
He was organized, he had time to manage his crew. Does that make sense?
Is that all I have for campground?
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have, maybe we'll have to put vending machine at the camp.
Yeah, so we just approached about the, the notion of having a, a vending machine for bait, uh, down there by Crescent Beach again. So I included that, the last lease agreement that we had with Jeff Rindell, when he had the Dark Horse Haberdashery, it's on page thirty-two. We had allowed this to, uh, to happen. It was down there for, for just a few months, and then he pulled the, the machine out. So I'm interested just in, in general about your thoughts about whether something like this, uh, uh, should be permitted, and, and then if we look at, at going down that road, what, uh, what a lease agreement might look like.
In this existing lease that we had with the other one back in eighteen, it says fifteen dollars per month for the term of the said lease agreement, and then fifteen dollars per month for electric, so was it a total of thirty?
It was thirty dollars.
Okay.
There was a good chance to give the fisherman a chance to buy bait down there.
And these are the people that wanna do this now are the ones that are in the Hanson Sibley building, and they're gonna have a bait shop and gun shop up there, correct?
Yeah, that's right. And, um, you just stopped in to, to talk about this, okay, we didn't talk any about what the, uh, requirements might be or anything, and then I pulled this, this out to show you what we've done in the past and get some feedback from the council, before we talk with the maester any, about the specifics. So your thoughts?
One downfall to have in it down there, you're not drawing people uptown to the bait shop. I mean, that's just a slight downfall, but. I don't know how much, I, I'm not a fisherman, so I don't know how much it would get used, I, I honestly.
We get asked for bait every weekend. Where, where can we get bait, and one was never open, and you didn't, uh, we're always for sure about the other one, or it, they might be open, but if they had what you wanted.
Right.
But it would, where would you, where's the proposed spot to put it next to the ice machine down there?
I don't know.
That's where, that's where this one was, was by the ice machine.
I think it's a good thing for the campers and the fishermen, I don't know why they wouldn't give it a whirl.
I, I'm, I'm off, I'm for it, but I don't know if that.
They'll find out if they're gonna pay, it's not up to us.
You're right.
As long as we get our money.
I think, you'd think maybe though we wanna do a, don't let it bring it in one month and leave it the next, you know what I mean?
Sure, yeah, we'd have some sort.
Has like a six-month agreement?
We'd have a, yeah, basically a, an agreement for the season.
For the season.
Yeah.
And, um.
They'll take it out, they can pay us for a certain amount.
Yeah, I don't know if fifteen's the right month, per.
It'll be thirty bucks.
You know, it should be twenty and twenty per month. I don't know what.
Yeah, it's.
How big a machine he's talking, I don't know how much electric it's gonna draw.
Yeah, this, this is not the same one that was there before.
Yeah, I, I don't remember what it looked like.
But it, anyway, it's bigger than a Pepsi machine, but, uh, and he, and he described this one as being older than that other one that was there. You know, our agreement with them, it says that the city is not responsible for any of that stuff, and the city's not responsible when the, when the vending machine doesn't work, you know, and, and all that stuff. We, and we make, in the agreement, we, uh, make them put their contact info on the outside of the machine. Well, if everybody is at least on board with this notion, I'll work with, with, uh, the business owners and get something put in place that would be a lease agreement, and it'll come back to the council again.
Sounds good. Okay, city participation in the housing.
Right. So we do have something to go through as, as a, as a proposal from our, uh, from our council's, uh, housing, uh, committee. So that was Dale and, and Whitey and the mayor, and I, and that's at this time, page thirty-three. So, this would be a policy that says that the, the city would participate with private developers in, in residential subdivisions, with the, the overarching concept on this being that the city would participate, uh, with financial assistance that is based on the property taxes to be anticipated to be paid by that development over the next twenty years. Okay, so, and we've seen those, uh, uh, the scenarios that, that we've used about determining what those property taxes would be. So we're looking at, at these property taxes then over the next twenty years. Okay, this, the, the model that we've used though, uh, it, uh, it, in this example, for both, for both Brotherton Development and, and for Lakewood Partners Development, we would assume three housing units built per year, um, out there in, in each one of the developments. Okay, so you, you consider three housing units per year, that they are entitled to, uh, tax abatement, and, and ultimately that, of course, uh, takes down the, the amount of property taxes that are, that are paid over the life. So we're looking at, uh, at this twenty years, okay, and then just, uh, several assumptions on that value of the land and structure does not change. In, in our financial model, the value didn't change, residential rollback was constant at fifty-four percent, and the city tax levy, uh, in this model remained constant, seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. And again, all the houses were eligible for tax payment. So out of this, the anticipated revenues off of twenty years' worth of taxes then, out of that, the city would install waters, uh, water service, would install electric service, would install, uh, street lighting then. All, all, they get at, at city expense, and then there would be an additional financial incentive to be paid then for each housing unit constructed. Okay, so the total amount of the water system, electric, street lighting, and the financial incentive then would not exceed the anticipated property taxes to be collected over those twenty years. See, the numbers that we've used for, for each one of these developments then, for, for the, uh, for the Brotherton, uh, development then, uh, the number is five hundred thousand, and for Lakewood Partners it was two hundred and fifty thousand. And that, again, that is based on the, the number of units and the anticipated value of the homes to be constructed there. So the Brotherton, uh, uh, property have, would propose to have additional, uh, higher, higher valued homes. So it generates, uh, generates additional property taxes. So the, the incentives then paid as follows, that we participate in the infrastructure installation. While the infrastructure's going in, we do water, uh, electric and street lighting, okay, and the remaining incentive is paid to the developer then as the, as the subdivision develops. So it, it is an incentive for infrastructure installation, but it's paid, uh, and with the groundbreaking for, for each unit. With noting that the incentive, this, this infrastructure incentive is paid to the original developers. So even if you sell a lot to, um, to somebody else, and then they're building their house, you know, a year later, when, when they break ground, there's still an incentive payment that would go, but it'd go to the original developer. Okay, so based on the, on the estimates for water, electric and street lighting, the anticipated, uh, per unit incentive then to be paid at groundbreaking, and for Brotherton Development, it'd be ten thousand dollars per unit, and Lakewood is about four thousand dollars per unit.
And in that, there's, we had our anticipation of like three per year, but if they do five one year, we're still doing the ten, the tenth. Like the Brotherton, for example, if they did five in the first year, we'd still do ten thousand per, up to five, however many break the ground.
Can somebody buy a lot and not build on it, just so they have a bigger, what happens then?
They don't get the incentive until the house is built, or the ground is built.
Is there a rule, and if you buy a lot, to be building one in such, in such a time, or this doesn't matter?
Not quite. It'd be between you and the developer.
Yep. Um, page thirty-four then, just a couple of other things here, that the financial incentives, of course, they'd be set forth in a development agreement. Couple other components then that would be built into the development agreement, and they deal with the specifications for streets, which, so the street specs would be higher than, than that spec that's in our subdivision code right now. But we would say street width thirty-one feet from back, back of curb to back of curb, seven inch, uh, PCC pavement, six inch crushed stone, compacted subbase, and eight inch, uh, corrugated subdrain. When Brothertons had prepared their, their costs originally, they included all of that stuff in, in theirs. The Lakewood proposal did not, so that would, would have some additional costs, although I'm not sure what the width of the street was you proposed.
Twenty-nine feet is what your code says, I believe.
And like I said, we, we would, um, the committee's gonna, we're gonna recommend that we would have a difference back and be thirty-one feet. And then my, the last, uh, paragraph there, that the. And then my, the last uh, paragraph there, that the, the city would agree to apply to SAC County for some additional funds. So we got some guidance about, from SAC County about the potential use for some ARPA funds. And we do have applications that we could, could submit to that. And it would be proposed and that we would apply to SAC County for uh, hundred thousand dollars for each of the developments. Okay, no guarantees on what that might ever amount to. What's the uh, council's thinking on the, on the committee's work?
I think you did a good job.
I think so too.
You cover everything pretty much accurately there, Dale?
I think so. I think so. In some ways.
My concern is just, you know, we talked about when they start building the, do we wanna have it in a certain phase, you know, like the roof's on and now we can pay it? You know, it's gonna get completed whereas, you know, it gets started with the cement and maybe that's the end of it for a while. So like I, I'm just tossing that out, not throwing a wrench into it, but I'm just kinda curious about.
Yeah, I guess the, the initial proposal here would, is basically that it would be paid, be paid to the developer at groundbreaking.
Okay, that's why I just wondered if that, if that, you know, starts three houses. That's great, but we'll see.
If they don't go any further.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're gonna pay that much for a lot and you're gonna.
Oh, I understand that, but I understand what Whitey's saying too, it'd be nice to know like, okay, it's up.
A shell is up.
Yeah, the shell is up.
Something that's gonna increase the value, that's gonna be on the tax roll.
Right.
That's gonna pay for that incentive.
Wouldn't have that in there.
Sure can, yeah.
Put that in the development agreement?
Yeah, paid, uh, yeah, that the pay, the incentive payment is paid uh, when the house is free. Any thoughts on, on this, Brothertons?
You gotta print out all that information so you can with that.
I, I, I do, I wanna make sure that the, the council's all on board with this before we release it to you, but yeah.
We used, we used your tax figures that you gave us at that one meeting, that's where we come up with that tax base number. And that's where we started with on that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we're doing that, we kind of thought we were in a pretty aggressive structure, three per year. You know, the first couple of years might not sound like that's too aggressive, but year five and six, that's pretty aggressive yet, you know? And we talked through it, Lake Shore Drive or East, East Shore Drive, wherever Chris lives. You know, over there, that's some of them lots ain't, aren't even built on yet to this day, so they're not, the city's not gaining no tax revenue. But once a house is built, then we're gaining that tax revenue.
I mean, it makes sense, I mean, that's, that was one of the things I explained here when I talked a lot of times, I mean, you get that tax revenue once the house is there, I mean.
And we, and we use the empty lot tax revenue on the empty lots in our formula to come up with all that. So Scott can certainly give that stuff to you.
Yeah, I'd like to see that and look it over.
And we tried to get back to you as quick as we can because you know our crunch, but again, we worked with the SAC County supervisors as well. They got some ARPA money, which is COVID money. And it sounds like they're willing to come up with a program, maybe, but there's no guarantees until they actually vote on it. But they did tell us to get the applications in if we're moving forward.
What was the city, what electrical, water? Street lighting?
Lighting.
Lighting, yeah.
Those are the three things right there.
And, and the incentive payment then per unit, yeah.
Which is, is what you can use towards the sewer or street or however you all look at it. As a, so streets all would be developers' costs, sewer would be all developers' cost.
Who maintains the sewer after it's done, does that go back to the city?
Back to the city.
So when uh, when the infrastructure's uh, installed, you just go ahead and dedicate it to the city and the city would accept it? And it'd be the city's responsibility from then on out?
What was the, the thought behind the one to thirty-one feet curb to curb instead of the twenty-nine?
My biggest concern was parking, so if it's only twenty-nine feet and you got a car parked to both sides, you don't have enough room for a vehicle to get through there, it's very limited. And so that extra two foot makes a big difference on the passing through. And that was primary, you know, on, on your development, you've got somebody coming from both sides, but the Lakewood one is a cul-de-sac. So now you're limiting getting to the other end for emergency vehicles or whatnot have you. And I just didn't wanna run into a problem, when I say I, because I was, I was pretty instrumental in making it wider. Like out at uh, Horseshoe Drive, now we've eliminated parking on one side of the road up there, so now we've eliminated parking spots because it ain't wide enough. I didn't wanna run into that in these new developments. And I, and we had some discussion on curb, on California curb. Like where Chris lives, you know, that's a flat drive out there and then everybody's, a lot of people have poured extra cement out there to have parking next to the road, which is great, but if you have a curb, that's, that's not an option, but somebody was really instrumental in wanting curb, so.
So over on Harrison Street where we did this last one, this last spec house.
Yeah.
That street over there, I believe, was only twenty-five feet?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, it's narrower than what you're expecting. And you put two cars on each side and I mean. No, I understand, but that's narrow, but then uh, the twenty-nine gives you that two feet you were talking to. And I'm only looking at this like that's fifteen hundred feet, two foot wider, that.
We definitely understand that, but we don't wanna have a problem in the future and we're trying to do everything we can do. Um, and we can't give away the farm, I mean, we went out twenty years, which I think was a pretty good timeframe for the tax return. You know, hopefully the street lasts.
That's what I was basing those numbers on myself, so.
Yeah, so that, that's why we went to the thirty-one foot. We want to make sure an emergency vehicle, if cars are parked on both sides, and we don't want the cops being called out there all the time, hey, I can't get through. My neighbor's having a party and the street's blocked, trying to eliminate that issues.
Does that thirty-one feet, does that uh, does that uh, only extend into the, the easement on each side of that street then, or is the homeowner gonna have to give up more of that uh?
Uh, the, the right of way would still be fifty feet, so it just extends into the easement.
Yep, and actually the street's actually only thirty feet wide really because you got the six inch curb on both sides.
Right.
Each side would only give up a foot.
Yeah, no, I understand that, that's making sure.
Yeah.
They'll give us that scene whenever you have it ready and take a look.
Yeah, so is the, is the council ready to, to take action that this would, to endorse this, this policy recommendation from the committee?
I think so, I like it.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'm so confused.
I'm so confused. Well, I got, I got Wolfman. Wolfman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Boulder?
Yes.
Hepman?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
That's off to the committee.
All right, so we're, we're good to go and I can get you that, that information then, we can, if you can, if you can come over sometime, we can sit down and talk through everything.
When we have that ready, do you think?
Tomorrow?
It's done.
Yeah, it's done.
I can just, you gotta print it off for you.
Okay. I'll be ready when I have one.
Or.
And, and Craig, there's probably some other stuff, you'll probably wanna stop back and get these from.
Yeah, the other.
The other stuff from Scott on the anticipated cost for the water, the electrical, street lighting. We have all them costs that we have anticipated, what they're gonna be updated figures for the cost.
So I guess I do have a question, when you talk about these figures. This being private development like this, even though it's gonna be turned back over to the city, as long as we meet those specifications of what is required, we don't have to go out and put this thing out to, to like a public bid and, and, and all that, like that becomes on us then. The other scenario that I was presenting was, well, it's, it's basically city funded and then you'd have to go out and solicit and all that. That puts that back on our shoulders.
Correct, the developer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one thing, I don't know if we talked about, but one thing we did talk about, if the city is participating more than our normal, where we will have the stipulations in our development agreement on both of these. Like for you guys, for example, if you're selling a lot to Jeff Ross, you can't make Jeff Ross buy everything from all of it. And if Lakewood Partners is doing theirs, they can't say, you have to hire me to build that house because he's a builder. If he sells a lot to Jeff Ross, Jeff Ross can hire John Meredith to build if he wants. Because the city's participating in that.
Or did you say if it's above you, what this is?
This extra incentive that we're doing, this other participation, that five hundred thousand, well, it's a hundred, it's like two hundred and fifty thousand a year, I think.
I like that, I don't remember, but.
Well, it's a total of five hundred thousand because we've got the electric. On your deal, your, our, your electric, your water is anticipated at a hundred and eighty-one thousand cost to the city. And your electric cost is at seventy-eight thousand to the city for us to put everything in. And that includes the street lights and stuff. So you take them two numbers off of that five hundred thousand, that's the extra money we have left that we're throwing at you and then the incentive payments of ten thousand for.